Stay tuned for a meeting of the Calabasas City Council. The meeting will be broadcast using Zoom and the city CTV Channel 3. Members of the city council may teleconference into the meeting without noticing or posting an agenda at their teleconference location. Besides the live TV and Zoom broadcast, the live stream of the meeting may be viewed online at cityofcalabasas.com/ctvlive. If you want to provide public comment, press raise hand if you're using Zoom or star nine if you're joining by phone. Just unmute yourself by pressing star six. Say your name and the city you live in. You'll be allowed three minutes to address the city council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. If the power or internet goes out lasting more than 15 minutes, or if there's some event that prevents the council from meeting, or prevents you from providing public comment, then the meeting will be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be rescheduled to the next regular meeting of the city council. Any other agenda items the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. Now, a meeting of the Calabasas City Council.
Good evening, I'm Mary Simauer, the mayor of Calabasas, and welcome to the February 9th, 2022 meeting here at City Hall. Tonight, I'm joined by Mayor Potem Shapiro, council members Weintraub Shapiro, I'm sorry, Weintraub Kraut and Buzajian. The pledge of allegiance this evening will be led by Andy Schrader. He is a Calabasas resident and a member of the staff or a council member, Los Angeles council member Paul Kretz. Welcome, Andy.
Thank you, it's my honor, Madam Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible.
The flipity. It's just for all. Thank you. All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Councilmember Buzajian.
Aye.
Councilmember Kraut.
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Shapiro.
Aye.
Mayor Mauer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, this evening we have two presentations. Our first presentation is by the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station. It's our monthly crime report with Deputy Di Matteo, welcome. Is he here this evening?
Hello.
He is. Welcome.
Good evening, thanks for having me. And is Lieutenant Evans on also?
We don't see him. Oh, he's under another name, I see him, we'll bring him in in a minute.
Okay. All right, well, good evening, I am Deputy Di Matteo of the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station. I will be presenting the crime report for the month of December 2021. Let's get started, we had three residential burglaries. These burglaries all took place on one night. This seemed to be a crime of opportunity as all three homes were vacant and several items were stolen. We had four burglaries from a business. We had 10 vehicle burglaries, which is a lot. We had six grand theft incidents, we had one petty theft and 10 thefts from unlocked vehicles. We also had one arson incident. This incident involved trash and clothing that was set on fire in a elevator in the Albertson Shopping Center on Agora Road. That is all of the, that's all we have for the month with a total of 31, 35 part one crimes with an increase of 34%. Now, there is, there's a lot to talk about. I know there are a lot of questions and concerns regarding current affairs. So if the council had any questions, please, I'm available and also is Lieutenant Evans.
I'll start with councilmember Buzajian.
Good evening, Deputy Di Matteo and Lieutenant Evans. I have a couple of questions. I'm going to try to avoid the politics of it because I don't think that's fair to ask you guys that. This is just the logistics of it. So I'm looking at year-to-date 2020 versus 2021, a one-year period. There's a 35% increase in crime. Rapes are up, strong-arm robberies are up, residential burglaries have more than doubled. Commercial burglaries are up, grand thefts have more than doubled. Petty thefts are up. Burglary, burglaries from vehicles are up. Um, what's, what are we attributing this to? What, what's, what steps are the sheriffs taking to, to work on this? Because this is very disconcerting to the public. And if this continues, the crime rate continues to go up exponentially, we're, we're going to have, you know, a neighborhood that's not very nice compared. And we've always had just a very low crime rate. This is extremely alarming. I don't remember in my years on the council, or even before then, when I was a resident, I don't remember the crime rate ever going up like this in a one-year period. That's my first question.
Lieutenant Evans, are you on, sir?
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
I apologize, I'm using my wife's computer, so my first name is not really Sonoma. So throughout the county, crime is going up and everybody is concerned. I think that it has a lot to do with some choices that have been made and prosecution. So there's less consequences for these crimes that are occurring. And we're still under some of the COVID restrictions, which are, without putting it too complicated, kind of like a sight and release type of situation because they, they want to decrease the numbers that are in custody. So there's less exposure to COVID. But as you know, dealing with Captain Becerra, he's not too concerned with the politics that are going on between the sheriff and the board of supervisors. His focus is on Lost Hills and the cities that he patrols or he's responsible for. So some of the things that we've done recently, he started a crime suppression team, which is a no-call team of deputies involved with, the deputies will get the highest stats in the station. They have a sergeant and they focus on areas that have seen an increase in crime, such as, you know, neighborhoods with the burglaries. Lately, we've been, they've been spending a lot of time in the malls for the smash and grab type of situations. So those, those people have been shifted around because they have been going to all the cities, but they've been shifted and they've been spending a lot of time in the Valley, Calabasas, Agora Corridor area to try and catch some of the criminals that have been coming in. But the truth is that if you allow predators to be predators, they're going to do what they do best. We're contractually obligated to provide you guys with a certain level of service, and we'll continue to do that regardless of what happens downtown at the board of supervisors level. The deputies are working hard, they are making arrests, they're out there. Our detectives are working hard based on the evidence that we've been getting from some of these crimes with fingerprint technology and DNA technology to try and take care of some of the increasing crimes. We have major crimes burglary task force has been out because we do believe that some of them is up, as you've heard, the South American organized crime burglary crews have been coming out. So we've had a major crimes burglary task force involved in trying to reduce some of the crime that's been happening.
All right, well, please let us know if there's anything the city can do to help in this situation because I, I am very concerned over this in the long run and it just seems to have crept up on us. All of a sudden, the numbers are there. And let us know in between these reports if there's things that are going on, we certainly like to know that. My second question, again, I don't want you to answer in a political way, I'm not meaning to be this political. But we have a situation where the board of supervisors has said you're going to not have new hires at the sheriff's department, apparently, or they're not hiring new classes, whatever. And then we also have a directive from the board that unvaccinated employees, county employees, may be subject to termination in the future. And then we have a third of the sheriff's department unvaccinated. So what, what, as far as staffing the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station, is there any threat to a reduction in staff if, or how is that going to be backfilled if people start getting terminated, but there's no new hires?
So if I understand correctly from the, what they voted on yesterday, they voted to direct the human resources director to look into how they can be in charge of the discipline for people that are unvaccinated and they're supposed to report back in March. So after they report back, there's a process that the county has set up and it's not going to be an immediate firing. I think it's possible that some people were waiting to see how it played out on the sheriff's department. Didn't, probably didn't expect it to go as far as it has. So from the last, the last notification that I had, there would be letters sent out to encourage people to be vaccinated. There'd be a 45-day moratorium on that. And then there would be some suspensions of an additional time for people to choose to get vaccinated before there was an actual firing.
I, I understand.
As far as Lost Hills goes, there's always going to be injuries or people that are out or IOD. But as I mentioned before, we're contractually obligated, we've, to provide you with a certain level of service, regardless of how many people we have available, the sheriff's department has always met their contract. And you know, if we don't read our contract, we have to return money and nobody really likes to return money. Recently, we have moved some of our injured deputies back into custody and traded them for patrol deputies that are working custody while their IOD is called ambassador program. So that program is going to keep our numbers of available deputies up so they'll be available to fulfill the contracts that we have.
Okay.
All people that are unvaccinated, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I understand how the civil service rules work and you're, you're correct, of course, that it's going to be a while, months before this would kick in. What I'm suggesting to you is that if there's going to be a shortage where you're going to have to pull people out of Lost Hills Sheriff's Station or give us deputies who are injured or whatever the case may be, if there's any reduction and you're not able to meet your contractual obligations, please let us know ahead of time so that we can make arrangements if we wish to do something else. Because I don't want it to all of a sudden be that you say, hey, yeah, in a couple of weeks, we're moving out 20, 30 deputies out of Lost Hills and you'll just have to deal with it. I, we'd like more notice than that because this is all hitting us kind of at once. That's all.
And that's not, not too much to expect at all, sir. We keep a daily track of our contract percentages to make sure that, and we monitor any trends. If there's a lowering of the percentages of the minutes that we provide to you, we make those adjustments to make sure that the minutes stay where they're supposed to. If we see an ongoing trend of the minutes declining, it's no problem to make sure that you guys are aware of it before it becomes a critical issue.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Weintraub.
I have a few questions. If there, I guess it's impossible for this not to come across political, but I'll try. If there was not this issue with the board of supervisors and the sheriff, given the current situation with the rise in crime, would there be a recommendation to change our contract?
There, you guys actually already added some to your contract and we appreciate you've added a full, a full-time motor.
Right.
To help with some of, and I think that traffic is one of the biggest concerns of your citizens because it's such a danger. But what they'll do, there could be a recommendation to add to the contract. Would that, that would entail looking at your population stats and the way the crime stats are going. There could also be a special, like a special contract that's overtime for a certain amount of period, rather than adding to the contract for over an entire year to try and address an immediate concern.
And can you explain to the public what happens when people are arrested for petty thefts under $950?
Do you want to cover that Deputy Di Matteo, or do you want me to?
Sure. Yeah, petty thefts, it's a misdemeanor and right now all misdemeanors, with the exception of some, for instance DUI, get a ticket, they are booked and then they are released. So petty theft crimes and other minor misdemeanors, we treat with a ticket and then a release.
Although I would say, I would say that in situations where it's likely to continue, say we've arrested someone two or three times in a few weeks, the watch commander can place a hold on the person if it, if he's a repeat offender over a period of time. And if they place a hold on him, that means that they're not going to get a ticket and they will stay in jail till they either go to court or bond out.
Okay, thank you. And what about people, the people that are arrested for grand theft, $950 and more or more? What's happening to those people?
Right now, it's, it's going to be the same, same scenario. People arrested for grand theft or non-violent felonies are getting booked. They're getting documented in our jail and then they are getting released with citation.
Right, so that's so concerning and every member of our community should be so concerned with that. That's why, in my opinion, the, these crimes are just continuing to happen because there's no consequences for anyone doing anything at this point. And I mean, as a city, there's not much that we can do to change that, but I think it's really important that the members of our community understand that these trends in crime are, there's reasons for them, they're just not happening out of nowhere. There have been changes in laws and changes in the way things are prosecuted and they're contributing to this. I also think, and you and I have discussed it, there's a really big concern with the residential burglaries and the possible Chilean burglars and how residents with, who back up to open space can protect themselves. So it's something I really want to focus on because I want people to feel safe in their own homes and that they should be able to leave and not have to worry that someone's going to get into their master bedroom and do what they're going to do. So I just think we have to continue having this conversation and do whatever we can.
And I also like to say that, I need the people to remember that the guidelines for releasing somebody are not set by the sheriff's department. They're set by the district's attorney in downtown. So we have to abide by those rules that are, that are in place and we just have to try to adapt as much as we can. As far as, you know, people that are back up to open spaces, we all get a little relaxed sometimes. We live in an area where we feel we're relatively safe. Sometimes we might not, you know, we might leave things open, we might leave packages out so people are our newspaper, so people know that we're not home. I think that there needs to be, maybe the community relations team could put together another packet of things they could, people could do at their home as far as crime prevention type of things. Like there's something called crime, crime prevention through environmental design. People can, we could put up some information about that as far as not having tall bushes right in front of your windows around your home. So people can see because a big bush in front of your window allows somebody to stand there and take the time to break in. So there's things you could do such as that as well.
Great, let's work together with our communications team and your team to get that out to the community. Thank you so much for everything you guys are doing. We're very.
Thank you for having us on.
Wait, we have a few more.
We're not leaving.
Okay, Lieutenant Evans, I think what you just touched on, I just want to make sure that the public knows that you have that service where you will come out and kind of look over people's properties and make those kinds of suggestions, whether it's lighting, you know, reduce some of your vegetation, et cetera. So we'll, we'll be posting that soon and, and promote that, that's.
Yeah, they also spoke about it, if anybody attended the town hall, the sheriff and the captain spoke about that as well.
Great, good. Council, Mayor Potem Shapiro.
Thank you and thank you Lieutenant Evans and Deputy Di Matteo and everyone in the department. We appreciate everything you do to help keep our citizens safe. The report is impactful, I'm not going to repeat what anyone else has said. All valid points, the question I have, the numbers are up and they're concerning to our residents and to us as a city council, but the numbers of crime are up exponentially in other areas all throughout Southern California, correct? I just want to make that point clear as well or ask you.
Yes, it's, it's not specific to Calabasas, the entire Southern California area and the other areas of the state as well, crime is, is up.
Okay, and again, the point raised of, of help making our homes safer is really important, anything we can do. Do you have any explanation other than the increase in, in crime and the increase in, or the decrease in penalties of why the grand theft or thefts, auto thefts and vehicle thefts went up in this past term, this past report, obviously unlocked is kind of a no-brainer. And I assume we always want to remind our citizens, keep your vehicles locked and catalytic converters, we, we're aware of that. But what about the locked vehicle thefts? And is there anything we can have our city or residents do to prevent that other than having open packages, wallets, purses, things in the vehicle?
Yeah, so Lieutenant Evans and I were looking over and comparing arrest stats from last year to this year. Each month, the arrest numbers were fairly comparable. However, there was a dramatic increase in crime this year as opposed to last year. There's a direct correlation between that and the lack of prosecution. And also COVID played a factor to that, to where a lot of people were home, they weren't working and property crime rose. So another, another way for, or another way for us to combat vehicle type thefts and burglaries is to just get up to the citizens to leave or to not leave valuable items in plain sight because that is the number one opportunity for criminals. They see something they want, they're going to go for it. They don't necessarily break into vehicles hoping they hit the jackpot because they want to get in and out and they want to grab the item they see and leave. So maybe some more PSAs and social media posts and more interaction with the community on a daily basis will help.
Okay, great, and the last point, and we, before pre-COVID, I know it was very active. We had some very strong and active neighborhood watch programs in our communities, not just through the HOAs, just the communities and working together in conjunction with the sheriffs in our city. I would love to see that pick up again as, as extra sets of eyes and ears to help out. Thank you again.
Thank you, thank you.
And I also want to thank you both, Lieutenant Evans and Deputy Di Matteo, for the work you do on a day-to-day basis and of course coming here and presenting patterns, trends, et cetera. I think what's important for the public to hear and take, one of the takeaways from this is that services have not changed. You are still maintaining the, the level of service that we contract you to do. And as Councilmember Buzajian said, if that should ever change, to be sure and let us know. I just want to reiterate that many of these crimes are related to vehicle burglaries, like, I mean, unlocked cars. You've got a bag of trash on your front seat, they don't know that, they break in if they, if it's locked and they take the bag of trash. I mean, it's avoidable frankly, some of what we're seeing here. So we will do our, use our social media to remind people of this and, and thank you both again.
Well, thank you for having us.
All right, our second presentation is by the Malibu Foundation on the Santa Monica Mountains Climate Vulnerability Assessment and Resilience Plan. We have several special guests and I'm really happy to see that they all could make it. We have the Malibu Foundation's executive director, Evelyn Weber. We have the board president of the Malibu Foundation, Candace McKeever. And we have the climate resilience program consultant on this project, Shay Cunningham, and presenter Dean Kubani. And if they could all appear, I, I'd like to take a moment to just go over the backgrounds of both Shay and Dean. And Mari, they're being brought in?
They're all in, Madam Mayor, we're waiting for Dean. There's a little delay, not sure why.
Okay, well, I'm going to begin with talking a little bit about Shay. Shay, she's a sustainability planning specialist and the principal of balanced approach. In addition to her work with the Malibu Foundation, she's co-director of Culver City's Sustainable Business Certification Program and the ESG strategist for ASGN Incorporated and represents the company in the UN Global Compact Sustainable Development Goal Accelerator Program. She founded and managed Focus on the Global South in Bangkok and was an analyst in the Organization of Economic Cooperation and Development of Paris. She also established the US Green Ribbon Award-winning Sustainable Program for Culver City United Unified School District and was the Culver City's 2021 Visionary Awardee. Welcome Shay. And we also have presenting Dean Kubani. Dean is an internationally recognized expert in urban sustainability. In a 25-year career with the city of Santa Monica, he served as the city's first chief sustainability officer. He oversaw the city's groundbreaking work in sustainable community development, renewable energy, water self, water self-sufficiency, pollution prevention, green building and sustainable business. He currently chairs the Santa Monica Commission on Sustainability, Environmental Justice and the Environment and teaches at the John T. Lyle Center for Regenerative Development at Cal Poly Pomona. So welcome to you all. And.
Are you ready to begin your presentation? I'll, I'll share my screen.
That'd be great, thank you so much, Mari Sella and Candace. Welcome. Are you all here or Shay or are you just here?
We are all here.
Mari, I'm not seeing them.
They're in, Madam Mayor, we see them.
Welcome Shay.
Thank you so much, Mary Sue, Mayor, Mary Sue Mayor.
Do you guys see the screen, are you guys seeing the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Let me know when you want me to advance.
Thank you so much. Candace, do you want to start?
Certainly, I'm Candace Vaughn McKeever, I'm the chair of the Malibu Foundation. As you all well know, three years after the Woolsey Fire, we are still in the process of recovering. And the Malibu Foundation with Shay Cunningham and Dean Kubani and our valued community partners and stakeholders have created what is a useful guide for municipalities, officials, agencies and community stakeholders at all levels to collaborate in the creation of a sustainable regional and localized climate action plan to deal with the ever-evolving threats and impacts of climate change. This collaborative regional resiliency guide has been over a year in the making and it is a guide to assist our communities in achieving what many are calling the great reset, if you will, to help proactively build resilience to shocks and impacts of climate change and to minimize the loss of property, lives and livelihoods. Sadly, to date, Agora Hills is the only city of the Santa Monica Mountains Wild and Urban Interface Region to have a climate action plan. And it's our hope that this guide will become a helpful tool in helping other cities like Calabasas and communities in the region to create individualized climate action plans that we will all collectively benefit from. And I'd like to also introduce our president Evelyn, are you there Evelyn?
Yes, hi there, I'm Evelyn Weber and thank you so much Candace for that. Now, the Malibu Foundation was founded by Malibu residents during the Woolsey Fire. Knowing that fires were something that will happen in the Santa Monica Mountains area, we decided that our strategy would be strongly rooted in resilience. You know, how do we better adapt and create resistance for ourselves, our neighbors, our community in our surrounding areas? And thanks to Dean and Shay and the board of the Malibu Foundation, I feel like this adaptive and resilience report is a good start to understanding needs and we look forward to taking action. To that, I'm just going to pass the baton to Shay and Dean and it's, they're far more interesting. Thank you.
Thank you so much Evelyn and Candace and good evening, honorable mayor, council members, city manager, members of the public. Thank you so much for inviting us to present to you this evening. Next slide please, I'm going to get right into it, we, we have a lot to present, but we want to do it actually the slide after this because this is, this was part of the introductions, so the next one.
this was part of the introductions. So the next one. Okay, great. So this right here is the Wildland Urban Interface Region of the Santa Monica Mountains, also known as the Wooni Region. And our project area includes the Lost Virginous Communities of Agora Hills, Calabasas, Hidden Hills, Westlake Village and the city of Malibu, as well as Topanga, Pacific Palisades and the unincorporated Santa Monica Mountains area. So this whole region it has about 108,000 people living in here. And next slide. So the project's three primary objectives were to identify climate hazards in the region with a focus on the most vulnerable populations. To propose strategies to increase resilience, sustainability and the capacity to the to adapt to the region's climate hazards. Serve as and also to serve as an actionable guide for regional collaboration by local governments, public and quasi-public agencies, residents and others regional stakeholders. Next slide. So early last year, we implemented an online climate vulnerability survey and received input from 400 residents across the region. We held two listening sessions, one focused on people over the age of 65 and the other was for day labors, including domestic workers and caregivers, which are many of these this population in the region. We conducted also a community asset inventory of the region's critical community infrastructure to help assess its physical vulnerabilities to climate resilience. As well as supported our research with climate forecasting data and other resources. Next slide. Here's a couple of survey questions, examples of survey questions that we had. So as you can see by the one on the left, the vast majority of respondents are already feeling the impacts of climate change with fire, heat and rising oceans at top of mind with respect to climate vulnerabilities. Next slide. So these are the hazards that we assessed in our study, including droughts, extreme heat, wildfire, extreme precipitation, precipitation, flooding and landslides as well as sea level rise. Next slide. So as you can see here, we're looking at the baseline and comparing the baseline extreme heat to mid-century extreme heat. So extreme heat, an extreme heat event is when temperatures exceed 95 degrees, which is considered to be a temperature that poses significant health related risks, especially for those most vulnerable. And as illustrated by these maps, by mid-century, the number of extreme heat days are projected to rise by five degrees across this region. Most affected will be Agora Hills, Calabasas and Hidden Hills, as you can see in the upper right hand quadrant. Most effective, well, as I mentioned, these temperatures will be well above 100 degrees in this particular quadrant. Let's go to the next slide, please. So this slide really displays how at risk the whole entire region is to wildfire. And the risk for probability is everywhere, but especially in the more mountainous areas of the region. Okay, let's go on to the next slide. So extreme precipitation is defined as heavy rainfall in short time periods which can trigger flash flooding. So as the mid-century precipitation map illustrates, the intensity and frequency of extreme precipitation days are expected to increase. As the darker green band through the middle of the region reveals, Topanga, Pacific Palisades and the unincorporated Santa Monica Mountains portion of the region will be hardest hit. So during periods of intense rainfall, surface erosion and landsliding can generate sudden and highly damaging debris flows and can destroy homes and critical infrastructure as well as block roadways and evacuation routes. So the next slide really illustrates the impacts on the roads and evacuation routes across the region. So as the baseline map illustrates, there is currently low to high risk for post wildfire debris flows. While portions of Topanga and unincorporated area are already categorized as extremely high. In contrast, the future road vulnerability map reveals a substantial increase in roadway vulnerability where nearly all the roadways move into the high or extremely high vulnerability categories. Okay, I'm going to go to the next slide, excuse me. So sea level rise is one of the most widely known climate change threats. The increase in ocean volume is caused by melting glaciers and the thermal expansion of water that happens as ocean temperatures increase. So the map on the left represents a 0.75 meter or about a little just little under two and a half feet sea level rise or SLR scenario. While the map on the right presents a two meter or about six and a half feet sea level rise scenario. Both scenarios project increased water levels by mid-century that can result in a significant loss of infrastructure, especially in the Malibu Civic Center area. And along the coast, of course, and along the Malibu Creek. And so the total properties that are predicted to be impacted are 1,642 properties in this area. This includes 1,607 residents, 46 businesses and eight recreational properties. So I know this does necessarily affect Calabasas directly, but as as greater part of the region, it certainly does. And okay, let's go to the next slide. We're going to get into the social vulnerabilities aspect of our study. So we found that the region is home to a disproportionately large number of people over the age of 65. So in comparison to the county, there's actually more than 22% of the of the region's population is in this demographic compared to only 12% in LA County. And significant number of of this population is actually has limited income. Especially for doing what they need to do to harden their homes and create defensible space and to to put onsite renewables on their home and with battery backup for more energy resilience. Many of these older adults lack social networks, adequate social networks. Many are very challenged with the emergency communication systems and they are disproportionately impacted by the extreme heat as well as wildfire smoke. And during evacuation orders, enclosures, it makes them very especially difficult for them to be able to leave as well as for caregivers to be able to enter into a system. Next slide, please. So the other group that we focused on, as I mentioned, are day labors and domestic workers and caregivers. And in our listening session with this population, we found that most were unaware of the emergency alert systems, which are critical to helping them reduce their risks during emergency events. Several of the participants lost their jobs during the Woolsey Fire, even if the homes of their employers were were still standing. They weren't able to get in and do their work for many weeks, which put a very maybe even months of real severe financial strain on them and their families. And this particular population is also especially vulnerable to the negative negative effects of wildfire smoke, especially those who are working outside. And also we found that 100% of those who participated in our listening session come in by public bus from South LA where the the air quality is also very poor, chronically poor. So they're really have some some serious underlying issues as well. Next slide, please. So the critical infrastructure beyond the roadways and evacuation rounds and coastal vulnerability issues that I mentioned, there's also a significant amount of other critical infrastructure that's at peril and with respect to climate hazards. This includes the power grid, which is highly unreliable in the area as well as telephone communications systems, the grid. As well as water demand in the region is almost entirely met by imported water. And this is going to be increasingly challenging for the region as the droughts and the extreme heats days continue to to proliferate. Next slide, please. And so I just wanted to mention that many residents just once again, kind of reiterating that there have constraints to upgrading their properties to be more climate resilient. It's not just those people who are over age 65. There's actually a fairly significant portion of people who are just lower income. And there's also only one official cooling center in the region, which is located in Westlake Village. And residents are not sufficiently, we found that residents are not sufficiently aware or prepared for the increasing threats related to climate change. And most of the cities, as we had mentioned, are haven't really addressed these long term issues. And and so we're hoping that this is going to change. Emergency communications, as I mentioned, are are an issue. And there's also an issue with respect to just not not having coordination between the municipalities and communities in the region with respect to the urgency events. And and there is also just limited overall coordination between the communities in the region as well as with the multiple agencies and jurisdictions that there are in the region. So my final slide is next. And this is is a great slide to really illustrate how many different jurisdictions there are in the regions. This is the public land ownership slide. And there's, you know, a multitude of local, state, federal, public agencies, conservancies, trusts across the region. In addition to, of course, the municipalities, it's really underscores the need for increased collaboration across the region's communities and stakeholder agencies to strengthen its climate resilience. So without further ado, I will hand it over to my colleague Dean Kubani to present on our key recommendations to improve the region's climate resilience. Next slide.
Great. Thank you Shay. And thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers for having us. I'm going to quickly go over the recommendations. But first, I wanted to talk very briefly about why the Malibu Foundation did this report and put it all together. The Malibu Foundation recognized in the follow up to the Woolsey Fire that there were a lot of issues and problems with emergency response and recovery. And a number of instances that pointed out that we in this region are not really prepared for what's coming with climate change. The foundation tried to work with a number of local governments to get some action on becoming more resilient and figuring out how we can address the impacts that we know are coming to climate change. But there was a lack of action on the part of most of the cities we've talked to. And because this is such an urgent issue and is moving so quickly, the foundation decided to move ahead and complete the analysis itself just to get the ball rolling and make some recommendations because we don't have any time to lose. The recommendations that I'm going to talk about, there's a lot of detail in the report, so I urge you to take a look at the report. They're not just recommendations for local government, but they include recommendations for utilities, for non-governmental agencies, nonprofits, for residents, for businesses, neighborhood organizations. So it's multi-level. And basically, if I can give you the 30 second summary, all of the problems that Shay just talked to you about, we're recommending ways to fix those problems. And we really need everybody in the region to to come together and start working on these things where they can in order to address them. Because again, this is a really urgent situation. So next slide, please. Primary recommendation, one of the primary recommendations is we need some more local government leadership in the region. As was mentioned earlier, only one city in the region, Agora Hills, has a climate action and resilience plan or an adaptation plan. LA County has a plan that covers the unincorporated areas, but none of the other cities have initiated these yet. So we are dealing with climate change impacts that are already affecting us and we know are getting worse. But we're also continuing to increase the amount of greenhouse gas emissions that we have. We need all cities in the regions to be simultaneously reducing their greenhouse gas emissions rapidly. Climate experts tell us we have until 2030 really to take significant action or we're going to be really beyond assistance. And the other issue is we also have to simultaneously, we're already seeing the impacts of stronger, more powerful storms. Just last month in December, we had I think it was about almost a foot of rain in one month, which and it all came within about two or three days. And more frequent, heavier fires, more frequent heavier droughts. We need to prepare for these and we are very underprepared right now throughout the region. Next slide, please. As Shay mentioned in in one of her slides, she showed a map of the roads. The majority of the primary roads throughout the region are vulnerable to landslides and debris flows and flooding, particularly after wildfires. These are also our evacuation routes. They're also our ingress and egress for emergency services. We really need all local government agencies to start looking at their local road infrastructure, particularly those vulnerable areas. We know where they are vulnerable and figure out how we can start safeguarding those so that we can make it safer for our residents and our public safety folks in the the future emergencies that we know are going to happen. Likewise, water infrastructure, this region is probably the most drought vulnerable region in California. And that is because almost 100% of the water in the region is imported. The water demand in this region is about four times as high as the average in Southern California. It's about three times as high as the average in Southern California. So there's a lot of opportunity to address water demand and bring it down. Local governments play a key role in that. But also, we we need as a region to start looking at alternatives to imported water. How can we not only reduce demand, but also create new sources of water such as recycled water, capturing storm water, treating sewage and other types of things for reuse. So we need to start working together with our local water utilities to solve some of these problems because this is a big issue and we're seeing major mega droughts coming. So this is something that really needs to be on the front burner. Next slide, please. Likewise, Shay mentioned that the energy grid in the region tends to be unreliable. We heard from a lot of residents in our surveys that their power goes out frequently. One way to address this is to focus on distributed energy generation, creating incentives for nano grids and micro grids in the region. Basically, people putting solar on their businesses and homes with battery storage so that they are not reliant on grid power. This will help make the region as a whole much more resilient. Will provide for emergency services and other types of things when there is another major fire or storm or other issue. Likewise, our communication grid is not always reliable, particularly when the when the power grid goes out. We have a number of recommendations for alternatives we to just using cell phone or landline phone communications, including hand crank AM FM radios, two-way radios and other types of things. We heard from a lot of residents, particularly the ones in the mountainous regions, who have a lot of difficulty during emergency situations with emergency communication and finding out what's happening and what they should be doing. So there's a number of recommendations in the report and the Malibu Foundation is moving on some of these right now. Next up or next slide. And then, as Shay mentioned, there there are a number of socially vulnerable groups in the region. There are, although the region is is largely a pretty high income, there are a number of lower income and fixed income homeowners. These people are all being asked to create defensible space, harden their homes. And they don't often have the resources to do that, to purchase the emergency equipment that they need to install things like insulation and air conditioners to combat the extreme heat. So identifying some levels of financial assistance for lower income residents in the region is a great need. Likewise, there are a number of older adults in the region, many of whom have communication challenge or transportation challenges. One recommendation that we have is to identify all of these at-risk older adults in the regions and identify neighbors that are willing to check on and assist these residents during emergency events. This is person to person resilience. It's been shown to be very effective in Topanga Canyon and some other areas. And we think that we could build on this throughout the region. Next slide, please. And with day labors and domestic workers, one of their biggest challenges is emergency communications, not having, if they're not primarily English speakers, getting alerts and understanding what's happening. We found that a lot of these workers who come into our communities every day are and are a great resource, are very underutilized resource during emergency situations. If they're given proper training and communications, they can actually help with recovery and safeguarding our communities rather than being negatively impacted by these things. And then also, the homeless communities throughout Southern California and actually throughout the state, where we all know that homelessness is becoming an increasingly large issue. These people are most at risk during climate emergencies, fires, floods, major storms and things like that, and heat events. We need to start having conversations as a region about how to address the unhoused community in our region. This is an ongoing problem that's not going to go away. We need to start thinking about it and addressing it, and there are a number of recommendations in our report. Next slide, please. This is my final slide. There are very limited evacuation centers and cooling centers throughout the region. I don't believe any local governments have heat response plans for extreme heat events. These are going to become much more frequent and we need to start thinking and planning for these events, figuring out where people are going to go, where they can evacuate to safely, where they can safely shelter when there are high-heat events, fires and other types of emergencies. And then lastly, although a number of our survey respondents said that they felt they're already experiencing the effects of climate change, we also found that very few people are actually prepared for what they need to do. It's incumbent upon all local government agencies and emergency response agencies to reach out to the community, the businesses, the residents, and let them know what is coming, how urgent it is, and what they can do to prepare themselves and improve their safety. And this is an ongoing job. It's a difficult job because people have short attention spans and other types of things. But this is something that the Malibu Foundation is trying to do and we're really encouraging all agencies and stakeholders in the region to really take this seriously because we recognize in completing this report how much of a coming crisis this is. And the major problems and emergencies that we've had with like the Woolsey Fire are just the beginning. We're going to have a lot more of these things and making a more resilient community in the region is going to help us weather these events in the future. So I think I was going to pass it on to Evelyn. Is Evelyn going to be touching on things the Malibu Foundation is?
Yes, thank you so much for all that, Dean. And I guess at the end of the day, climate resilience can only be successful through sustained community connections and involvement. And it's the old adage, you know, communities who work together thrive together. So to that, I want to thank you, Mayor, and the fellow council members for your interest and participation in this report. To that, I want to just really discuss quickly, based on the reports that we or the lessons that we've learned from this report, the Malibu Foundation has created a list of commitments that Dean was.
It'll be on the next slide, by the way, just so you can see it. Sorry for.
Okay, yes. All right. So next slide. Thank you. Thank you Shay. And that includes, you know, communications and radio distributions to the vulnerable community. Again, community organizing and neighborhood groups, Spanish language emergency preparedness series, which includes, you know, heat and communication, as discussed. They proponent of native replanting to, for reducing fire risk and conservation of both water and such. And with various partners, creating ignition zone home mapping and identifying neighborhood points of vulnerability, including identified vulnerable populations within that community. And creating fire hydrants within communities of replacement and additions. Supporting fire-safe councils and resilient hubs. And like anything, supporting home hardening efforts. And all these are commitments that we've learned and and has been supported by the report that both Shay and Dean had spearheaded. So to that, I'm going to have, pass it on to Candace Baumkeever, who is our chair for some closing statements. Thanks, everybody.
Well, I would just like to express our gratitude to the mayor and to city council for your time this evening, and we hope that this will spark interest in collaboration throughout the region. And we look forward to working with you should you have any questions as you develop your own plans, which I understand are underway. So we thank you again for your time and attention.
All right. Well, thank you all also for the work you've done since the Woolsey Fire to look at the regional approach to some of the key problems. I'm going to ask our city clerk, Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public that would like to speak? And if so, can you call on them?
Yes, we have various speakers, Madam Mayor, yeah, but Norma Citron, followed by John Sawara and Andy Schrader. So we'll bring them one at a time.
Okay, thank you.
I am unmuted, I think. Hi, I'm Norma Citron and I'm a 34-year, not year-old, but a 34-year Calabasas resident, Madam Mayor, Council and City Manager. And we attended last night's meeting of the Malibu Foundation presentation. And as it was presented tonight as well, we thought the Foundation presents achievable goals and really gives us a roadmap to reach those goals. I was inspired to sign up and I'm continuing my investigation. I would love to be able to participate. And I urge our city, city council, city manager, and I think our city manager was there last night too, I think I saw him there, to join this effort. I was completely overwhelmed by the thought of climate and what role I could possibly have in this. But the presentation is just so clear. And the roadmap is so clear that even me, as just a citizen, I think I can do something at my level to help. And thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mari, who's next?
John Sawara. Go ahead, John.
Okay, thank you very much. Joanne Sawara, longtime resident of Calabasas. And I wanted to thank you for the presentation by the Malibu Foundation. It really was so informative and eye-opening. And I was thinking that Calabasas has always prided itself on being on the forefront regarding environmental issues. And I was so disappointed to learn that we don't have a climate action plan. So I'm respectfully asking that the council take steps to immediately begin the process of adopting a climate action plan. I know there are many people in the community who have an interest in it and expertise on the subject. So I'll hope you'll consider how they can become involved in the process as well. Kind of like advisory committee when you put the general plan together. Good to have everybody's opinion and expertise. I'd like to see a cross-section of the shareholders involved. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andy? Go ahead, Andy.
Hi, Council. Thanks so much for letting me speak tonight. I appreciate the, this is Andy Schrader, Calabasas resident. I appreciated the excellent presentation. You definitely couldn't ask for more qualified experts than Dean and Shay and the rest of the team. I do have to say, it's a little disconcerting to live in such a vulnerable city that is not actually taking steps to create a climate action plan nor resilience plan, particularly after a climate exacerbated event as significant as the Woolsey Fire. And just to underline how quickly the climate breakdown is getting worse nearby, the state of Arizona, whose weather really matches our own, keeps smashing records for heat-related deaths. They went from 283 in 2019 to a staggering 494 in 2020. An entire neighborhood in Boulder County, Colorado, last month ceased to exist in less than three hours due to a climate exacerbated wildfire like Woolsey. The August 2021 heat wave that hit Oregon, Washington and the Northwest led to over 500 deaths. So I presented some low-cost paths forward to the Los Virginas Malibu cog in 2019 paths that the city of Los Angeles is now well down the road and taking. And I was pretty disappointed that Calabasas did not step up and do something at that point, less than a year after Woolsey. And also sidebar, but related, Dean underlined how water-vulnerable our region is because we can only get water from the state water project, which is overseen by the Metropolitan Water District Board. I do want to put something on your radar. It is also disconcerting that our Los Virginas Water District is represented on the Met Board by someone who's not actually an elected official and is not actually accountable to Calabasas voters. So you might want to look into that. The 500 votes occurred in the Northwest, sorry, the 500 deaths occurred in the Northwest because it was not, they were not prepared for what is coming. The city of Calabasas now has before it a very detailed report about what is coming, what is here. You can't claim ignorance. So anything that happens next is really on you. So I look forward to seeing what you come up with. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
We have no other speakers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to go to my colleagues on the council now. I first wanted to acknowledge that Mayor Pretend David Shapiro and I are both on the Calabasas Sustainability Task Force and had been looking at this presentation. And he was in attendance, as was I last night. All right, so let me take a look. I thought I saw.
Councilmember Kraut, Madam Mayor, and then Mayor Pretend Shapiro.
He's not popping up. Councilmember Kraut, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I want to thank our Malibu Foundation for doing such an excellent presentation tonight. It was very informative. And I wanted to share a couple of thoughts. In particular, in response to a number of your items on there, many of those items are in our strategic plan that we're putting together, trying to prioritize what our council will be focused on the upcoming year. Obviously, there's a few things that are outside of our purview, like our water district. But I'm happy to report that our water district is currently working on a pipeline that would allow them to bring Colorado River water into our district as well, where we're currently reliant strictly on the state water project from where we're located in the system. The other thing that they're currently doing is working on a plan. They actually have a program that's in operation where they are filtering water from the effluent from our sewage treatment to drinking water quality standards. There's tours available. I've taken the tour and I've actually drank the water. And it's amazing what they're doing. And that water will be some, in one way or another, stored so that we can use it for times of need. And great information, great tour. I strongly suggest anyone who has not done so to reach out to our water district and take that tour. My question, I think, for this group would be, we would love to get a climate action plan together. In fact, that's one of our highest priorities, I believe. We'll find out as we further along the process here. But I'm wondering why we don't, as a region, have a strategic environmental action plan? Where I've seen one of our neighboring cities spend hundreds of thousands of dollars putting a plan together and we all have very, very similar goals and very similar needs. I'm not sure why we're not collaboratively working as a community on this so that we can share the cost of a climate action plan instead of putting that burden on each and every city to do a repetitive effort. Has there been any discussions of that and where can we take that?
Yeah, I'll address that. Thank you for the question, council member. We actually, it's probably about a year ago now, Shay and I went to your local cog, the Los Virginas, Malibu, Los Virginas cog, and recommended that very thing, that the cog take a coordinating role in preparing an environmental or climate action plan for the entire region with all the cog-member cities. The Malibu Foundation actually offered to provide a significant amount of funding to help pay for that with a much smaller cost for each participating city. We spent several months talking to council members and city managers and other folks in the region. And for whatever reason, we heard lots about COVID and no budget and it's not on our list, so we can't do it. Lots of those kinds of things. We, we found that people had lots of very good ways to say no. So there, people weren't stepping up. I mean, we were, we're doing everything we can to try and help this along. We want to achieve exactly what you said. And we think it would be in the best interest of all the cities to actually sit down and have a discussion about how to make it work. I think it, because it is a region that's very similar, it certainly would bring the cost down. We talked to some consultants that actually do this kind of work and it could bring the cost down significantly to, if you all join together to do it rather than do it individually. So I guess I would put that back to you and your representatives on the cog. I don't know if that's the best place to have that conversation. It seems like it should be. But if not, I would suggest that maybe your council can reach out to some of these other councils and have some discussions with them and their city managers to figure out how to make this happen. And we're certainly, I'll speak on behalf of the Malibu Foundation, interested in helping make that happen because again, this is very urgent. We can't sit around and wait for it to happen. We need to make it happen.
Dean, I have a follow-up question to that. It could be a variation of the cog, couldn't it? It could be possibly Calabasas and Malibu and unincorporated LA County, who already has a plan. And how would something like that work if the other cities aren't interested or would prefer to do it themselves?
Right. Joining forces with anybody, I don't think it would make sense to join up with LA County. I mean, they're well along in their plan. They've had a consultant on board for a long time, so I don't know it would make sense to join their effort that's already going. But teaming up with, you know, even one other city could be advantageous and I think bring the cost down. So yeah, talking to any of the other cities in the region that might be interested, like Malibu. We will be doing a presentation similar to this, to Malibu City Council in the coming weeks. So I think there might be some interest there. And to the extent that you or your colleagues can reach out to some of the other council members or folks at the city. I know that we have contacts there. There's a number of people that have been part of the process in developing this plan on our project advisory committee. So, you know, people are looped into this. It's just, I think, a matter It's just, I think, a matter of getting, I know how difficult it is. I worked in city government for twenty-five years. It's always hard to come up with the money and get the approvals and get the staff reports done and all of this stuff to make it work. But I think that that difficult work to make that happen can end up saving a lot of time and money on the backend.
I think one of our speakers likened it to a general plan where there's a lot of public input workshops. It's, it's a very big project that would require consultants and a team of them because I know our own staff is, is, you know, has limitations. So. Mayor Pretend.
Going through, I mean, we, I recently prepared a climate action and adaptation plan in Santa Monica that is a great model and is available as a model and can be used. There is a lot of public input. We had a number of public meetings and events to raise awareness and to hear about specific things like from the, the building community related to recommendations that we're going to go in on how to make buildings more efficient. For instance, we tried to bring in all the stakeholders. So, yeah, it is a, it is a big, you know, it's a time-consuming process where you need public input. But doing it that way is a way to get a very valid, useful document. Because, I mean, creating a climate action and adaptation plan is step number one. The more important part is implementing all the things that are in it. There's going to be a bunch of recommendations. Those are going to cost money. You as council members are going to need to figure out how to allocate your budget in order to do it. And, I mean, if, if you want to significantly cut your carbon emissions plus prepare for all of these climate emergencies that we know are coming, you're going to have to change the way you're thinking about spending money. It's, I mean, we're living literally in a different world right now going forward. And a lot of these conversations are happening at councils at cities all over the country that are trying to address, how do we, how do we become carbon neutral? How do we pay for that? And, you know, it's basically changing the paradigm a little bit. So it's, there's a lot of work, but there's also, the good news for you is, a lot of the, the ground has been broken already. It's really starting the conversations in Calabasas and putting that plan together and then really figuring out, how are you going to allocate your budget to make it happen?
And I, I would just quickly add that there's also funding that is available, you know, at the, at the state level. There, there's a particular program called the California Resilience Challenge. And I, I believe that they're going to have another round of funding. And so just keep an eye out for that. And there are, there are other, you know, pots of money out there to help subsidize the plan.
Thank you. Mayor Pretend Shapiro, I saw your hand up. It's down. Did you have anything to add?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you all for the, the excellent report and presentation tonight. There are things that get better with age. This is three times in a week I've had the pleasure to go over this report and last night see it presented as well, as well as tonight and worked, as Mayor Maurer said, going over this and discussing in our own task force last week. So it is, it is extremely impactful, extremely powerful. And I appreciate what you've provided so far, a great stepping stone for us, hopefully. To me, it, it's, I, I look at it, it's, it's a climate action plan, it's an emergency plan, but it's also emergency preparedness. They're really twofold. So we're really dealing or trying to tackle two things at the same time. And when we talk about funding or use of funds for these items, they really benefit, cross-benefit each other. So hopefully, we can look at that going forward. Where were, I had a couple little questions, and I didn't ask last night. Where were the listening sessions? There were two listening sessions. Where were they held, if I can ask?
Sure thing. Yes, the first listening session was virtual, just like this. I was with the seniors. And the second listening session was held at the Malibu Labor Exchange. You probably know where that is. So outside, outdoors, safely masked. And, and just so, you know, we also held a, an emergency, the first ever in the region, a Spanish-language emergency preparedness day in September because of the outpouring of, of the clear needs for, of that community to have upscale their emergency preparedness. So that was a, quite a successful event. We had a really good turnout. It was like over fifty people attended.
Fantastic. And, and you mentioned it earlier when you talked about the coastal flooding maps, that they may be more centric to Malibu or, or Topanga or Palisades. But anything that goes on affects our entire region. We are interconnected. So talking about just a few of the items, obviously, the idea of the cog or our cities getting together or some form of the region, in addition to our city having a plan. There are individual things I am anxious to get going or little things. They're not so little, but they can be done. You put them in your reports. I, I discussed at the crank radios, which serve multiple purposes, not just fire, earthquake. Anytime the power goes out, that's something that would be helpful, especially for our senior and vulnerable populations. The cooling centers, things the mayor has spoken about before. And our roads are certainly affect multiple cities in a region. And our major roads, there are so many right now, infrastructure grants, whether they're federal or through the state or through SCAG or other opportunities. It would behoove us to work with as many cities as we could to start with something like that, especially in the Los Virginas, Malibu Road, Lost Hills, Canaan, all, all those roads, PCH, I assume, as well. So I don't know if that's something that you've looked at or you're recommending as well.
I don't know if you can see, man, I'm just, just to quickly give input. What we noticed is, I, I think that it will improve the chances of getting the funding by coming together because that's, you know, an innovation in and of itself is taking a regional approach. So I think the region, the different cities coming together really improves the chances of getting that funding.
Well, thank you very much. I won't take any more of your time except to say, hopefully, we will be working together very, very soon.
All right. I don't see any other council hands up, so.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Weintraub.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Weintraub.
No, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. And I know that Mayor Maurer and Mayor Pretend Shapiro are taking the lead on this, and I look forward to your efforts. So thank you for this presentation.
And I just want to say to the members of the public and to our guests that next week we have a work plan workshop where we are identifying some of the strategic priorities for the city and environmental leadership and, and is definitely one of the areas as well as emergency preparedness. So it's the next step in a multi-step process to identify what direction we should go in. So I'm optimistic that you are here at this time and that my colleagues have entrusted us. And we have the Emergency Task Force, too. It's all kind of dovetailing. And I would like to say that maybe at that point in that meeting, there can be some clarification about outreach to Malibu. Kendon, I know you have talked to the Malibu City Manager before. I don't know if it's the interim one or assistant, or I'm not quite sure where they're at in Malibu. But maybe there, you could at least get a sense and, and our task force could get further direction from our colleagues if that's something that they'd like us to do. And then we do have representatives on the cog, and I absolutely think it's worth revisiting it. It's been a year, like you said about, and we're coming out of our COVID days where things have just been set aside for a while. And we certainly are creating our own foundation here at the city and being project-oriented. So it's a good time. It's a good time to be discussing this, much better than a year ago. So thank you all. Thank you for the work you do, and thank you for participating this evening. It's great. And good luck with Malibu. Keep us posted. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, our council announcements. Mayor Pretend Shapiro, would you like to start, please?
I would love to start. Thank you. Very first item, speaking of good things coming out of COVID, is Saturday, March 12th upcoming. We can't prepare long enough. At, from ten to twelve at Chaparral Elementary will be our annual Arbor Day celebration and planting of trees and celebrating Arbor Day and our being Tree City USA, as we always are. I also want to take a moment to congratulate our Calabasas High School basketball team, boys' basketball team that won the Marmani League Championship this last week. First time in a while, and they, it was a big, big, big victory. The same night, the girls of our city also won their game as well. And the boys' frosh soft soccer won their match, last match of the year as well. Also want to mention, the Senior Center has an ongoing food drive, which supports the West Valley Food Pantry. So if you have food items, special items, you can look on our website, but bring them to the Senior Center collection from now almost through the end of the month. And we have had, thank goodness, good news. The COVID numbers, as the mayor alluded to, have been reducing, going down. We hope, we hope they continue to do so. And we hope there is no large, large numbers after the Super Bowl here this Sunday. And speaking of the Super Bowl, this Sunday, Super Bowl Sunday, I want to wish our own Los Angeles Rams and those Rams who are residents of Calabasas the best of luck. They're going to bring home a victory. And in anticipation of that, our city civic center is lit up in blue and gold. So go Rams. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Buzogian.
Thank you. I don't have any answers.
Councilmember Kraut?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
I just wanted to announce that through the mayor's youth council, there is an essay contest open to anyone twenty-one and younger in our community for Black History Month. And the question is, what does Black History Month mean to you? And there is more information on our website, but it's a great opportunity to share your thoughts. And it's open again to all elementary, middle, and high school and anyone twenty-one years of age and less. So we hope for lots of participation from our community. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my announcement.
Sorry.
That's okay. I'm glad you did that. And speaking of Black History Month, I encourage our residents to go online and visit our, or go in person and visit our own library where there are a host of different opportunities to learn about Black history, Black contemporary writers, videos, movies. It's, it's a very vibrant place during Black History Month. And let's go Rams and Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. All right, oral communication. These are for items that are not on the agenda. And Madam Mayor, are there, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, are there any public speakers for items not on the agenda?
Madam Mayor, we have no hands up.
Okay. All right, we're moving right along. We're on to consent items. We have items one through six. Are any council members wishing to take an item off of consent?
I'd like to take item four off.
Item four? Any others?
Yes, I'd like to take item six off just for introduction and other than that.
I actually was going to do that as well. I have an introduction since they're my commissioners. And I was going to do it after consent. Do you mind if we leave it on and we both do it after?
Perfect.
All right, anyone else? Okay, so we're, we have items one, two, three, five, and six. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
One second.
All right. We'll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Sajin?
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Shapiro?
Yes.
Mayor Maurer?
Yes.
Carrie S. Zero.
All right, item number four is approval of a memorial bench honoring the late Brandon Boujot for installation in Grape Arbor Park. And I'm glad to make a comment as well. Go ahead, Councilmember Weintraub.
No, I just wanted to acknowledge the contribution that Brandon made, made to our community. And I was really happy to see this on our agenda. I know he did a ton for his own community, but his presence was felt throughout the larger community, not only for the work that he did during the fire and his HOA, but just every time you would see him out in the community. And it's a really sad loss for the community. So I'm thrilled that this is on our agenda.
Yeah. I had the pleasure of spending time with Brandon and his family at Deansa Park for the roller hockey leagues. And he was always a lot of fun to be around. And I know it's a tremendous loss to his neighborhood and to his family, but he will always be remembered, especially with this bench. And wish, with that, is there a motion to approve number four?
Madam Mayor, we have two hands up. Councilmember Kraut?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I'm glad that we did pull this off the consent calendar because this does deserve a special recognition here. I've known Brandon for over twenty years. He lives on my street. He lived on my street and was an amazing contributor to our community, to our homeowners association. He participated in everything from our garage sale to our community picnic, to our neighborhood watch. And when it did come to the Woolsey fires, I think it's, it's special to mention that Brandon, along with an off-duty LA County fireman, stayed in the neighborhood throughout the Woolsey fire and put out spot fires. And our LA County off-duty fireman was obviously trained in doing that. And Brandon was, you know, had the courage enough to stick around with this level of, of competent help with him, but participated in, in laying down hoses and just really went above and beyond to protect the Saratoga Hills and ranch community and will be forever in his debt.
Thank you. Councilmember Buzogian? You're on mute. James, you're still on mute?
You're muted.
Sorry. I'm used to not being muted. So I, I also want to join with the council in, in, in this memorial tribute to Brandon, whom I knew and was very well respected in the community, as has been indicated. Tom, I wanted to ask you, are there a plan, like, do we know about when this bench will be ready for installation?
Yes. The friends and, and family members of Brandon are interested in trying to do it as quickly as possible. They've already ordered it. We were trying to help them, to be honest, so that they could get that in process. And we pretty much, no offense to the council, told them this is probably a yes. And if they wanted to go ahead, they probably should, and they've already done that. So they expect to put it in, actually, on the anniversary of his passing.
Okay, if, if staff could let us know to the extent there's any kind of ceremony or whatever, we would, some of us would like to go.
We will definitely do that.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Pretend Shapiro?
Thank you. I just joined with everyone. Obviously, Brandon meant a lot to the entire council, the entire city, as well as the Saratoga community. This is a fitting tribute. Anybody who has a privilege to go to Grape Arbor Park and sit in the bench and spend a little time thinking about what he did and what he meant for the city and, and community and our thoughts and prayers go out to the fam- family as well as friends. Thank you.
All right. Next on our, well, let me go back to item number six. This was consideration.
Madam Mayor, they need, they need to vote on item number four.
Oh, my apologies. Is there a motion to approve number four?
I'll move.
Second? All right, second by Councilmember Kraut. We'll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Sajin?
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Shapiro?
Yes.
Mayor Maurer?
Yes.
Motion carries, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, item number six, consideration and approval of appointment of Greg Byrne as an alternate to the Planning Commission and Monica Palmer to the Library Commission. And they were both my recommendations, and it was, it's my pleasure to tell you and the public a little bit about each one of them. Monica Palmer has lived in Calabasas for eleven years. She has two children currently at Calabasas High School. She is an active volunteer at our Los Virginas Schools and has held various positions on several PFAs, site councils, the gate board, the city school traffic and safety panel, and canvassed for several district funding measures. And canvassed for several district funding measures. She's currently the vice president for the foundation, a parent body raising additional funds for all. Lost Virginous Unified School District school sites. She also served on the Lost Virginous Unified School District Environmental Stewardship Committee for several years, helping the district achieve green leaf designation for their school campuses. And winning the Carl Gibbs Award with the, uh, environmental stewardship team from the city of Calabasas. Finally, Monica's background, uh, professional background is public health and pharmacology. But currently she is working with several nonprofit organizations fundraising for needed facilities and programs in the commuter, community and greater LA area. Her family has volunteered in our community for years and supported many of the city of Calabasas's efforts. So congratulations, Monica. And let me introduce also, I believe they're both in here, Greg Byrne, who is the alternate to the planning commission. Brad, Greg was born in Sacramento, grew up in the small city of Sierra Madre, which is located in the foothills of the San Gabriel Mountains. He and his friends became avid hikers and spent most of their free time hiking and climbing in the local mountains. His interest evolved from backpacking to technical rock climbing. And, um, he received, he went on to receive his Bachelor of Science from Cal State LA. Since that time, he's been employed as an engineering geologist. Isn't that funny how you can grow up around rocks and you make a career out of it? Um, with a local geotechnical consulting firm that specializes on hillside residential developments in the Santa Monica Mountains and the surrounding areas. He has extensive experience evaluating sites for future developments and evaluating distressed properties and providing recommendations to stabilize those sites. He's a licensed professional geologist and a certified engineering geologist. He's a twenty-four, five-year resident of Calabasas, is married and has one child. He's interested in preserving the quality of life in the community for future generations. And although he has never held an office like this, he's excited to become a part of the planning process to achieve that goal. And starting off as an alternate, alternate to the planning ki- commission is a perfect way. Um, so welcome to both of you. Congratulate both of you. I'm going to swear you in now. At, at simultaneously, at the same time, I'm going to read part of the oath. And if you could repeat after me, raise your right hand. I, and then state your name, do solemnly swear.
Hi, Monica Palmer. Do you solemn, solemnly swear?
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
I'm getting mixed up here. That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
There you go. Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
For purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
All right, congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna ask if either of you have comments and then I'll open it up to my colleagues. I'll start with Greg. Any, any thoughts, any comments?
Well, I, you know, I love the city of Calabasas and I've seen a lot of change over the years. Calabasas is a very unique city, a beautiful city, and it has a really good general plan. And, uh, I'm interested in seeing that the, you know, the projects that come through this city as best they can conform to the general plan and all the, you know, applicable municipal ordinances. So this is a way that I can do this. And like you closed with, I'm pretty green. I've never done any kind of city work, but I'm willing to give this a shot and it's kind of exciting. So if you'll bear with me through procedural things and, and those kinds of things, I think this will be a great, uh, this will be a great engagement.
Well, if you've been watching this council meeting and all the little flub ups I do, it happens. So thank you for your service and Monica, welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Um, I think I, I've worked with each and every one of you so many times. So you know, I'm extremely passionate about our city and about our schools. And I'm so excited as a lifelong learner, uh, to learn more about the library and the inner workings of the library. And I hope I'm an asset to the team.
Wonderful. Great. All right. And do any of my colleagues have any comments? I don't see any hands up. Oh, Mayor Pretend Shapiro.
Thank you. Just briefly, congratulations. Thank you both for stepping up. And Greg, uh, you're going to do just fine. I think it's a requirement now that each, uh, planning commission has an engineer, certified engineer on it, according to Peter. So. Uh, thanks for stepping up and volunteering. It's a lot of work, but it's beneficial to all of us. And Monica, the, it's, yeah, I served in the library commission of six years. It's a great commission for you amongst your twelve million other things you're doing. So thank you for continuing to step up. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Crowe.
Yes, thank you, Monica. We're excited to have you on board here. You've done a lot of great things for our school and, uh, your heart has always been, uh, for the best of Calabasas and, and we love that you're participating. And, and Greg, I have to say especially to, you spoke before the planning commission, uh, at least once, and I remember you as, uh, passionate and well spoken. And with, uh, the true, uh, the best of California was your in, uh, best of Calabasas was your intention. It, it, it really came through in everything that you said. And if you just carry that to the planning commission, then our city is in good hands. Thank you for stepping up.
Appreciate that.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Just wanted to say thank you to both of you for stepping up to serve. I know you both will do a great job on your respective commissions.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Buzogian.
I too wanted to congratulate both of you and I wish you the best of luck on your commissions.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, before you go on, we have Joe Choco with his hands up. I believe he wants to make a comment regarding this appointment.
What was that?
Joe Choco.
Oh, okay. Joe.
Thank you. I'm Joe Choco, I'm a longtime resident. Greg Byrne is an excellent choice for the planning commission alternate. His geotechnical expertise brings a skill set that is pertinent to any hillside development projects. His hands-on experience provides a level of understanding necessary to make informed decisions in this regard. His guidance and perspective will make a valuable contribution to achieving the city's planning goals. I support Greg's appointment and look forward to his participation on the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Choco. Are there any other public speakers?
No, Madam Mayor, we have no more.
Right. All right. Well, thank you again, both for your service and we'll move on. Um, we have item number seven. Are there any council members or staff that would like to take a break or should we move through the financial report? If you do say, raise your hand. I'm not seeing any, Mari, are you?
No, Madam Mayor, no hands.
Right, so we're going to proceed with new business item number seven. Uh, consider the annual comprehensive financial report and other audit reports for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. On staff, we have Ron Allers presenting and for our consultants, Terry Shea, Evelyn Morenton Barsena from Rogers, Anderson, Malotti and Scott Rams. What a great name. Welcome to all of you.
Ron, sorry, am I starting off or are you? Okay, yes, I will start. Um, hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Evelyn Morenton Barsena. I am the supervisor that is, uh, was on the audit for this past year. And so just wanted to start off by saying, you know, thank you to the council for, you know, allowing us to continue to be your auditors and you perform these services and to continue to be, uh, consultants for you, you know, throughout this, uh, year. So thank you very much for that. And thank you to, uh, finance staff as well. They were very diligent in providing us all the information accurately and, um, quickly so that we were able to get the audit done, you know, in a timely manner. So thank you to all of finance, you know, and, uh, their help throughout the whole process as well. Uh, I'll just start by kind of going over, um, I have four reports that I'll go over, um, for the audit. I'll start first off with the auditor's report. So there were a bit of changes to the report this year, uh, namely the format, um, due to a new auditing standard that, uh, came out, which required the most important part in the report, which I believe, which is the opinion to go at the very front of the letter. So, uh, in the opinion to the financial statements, uh, we delivered what is considered to be a clean opinion on the city, which means that we did not find anything in our opinion that materially misstated the financial statement. Uh, it's the highest level of assurance that, you know, we are able to give. And again, city did a great job on their audit. Uh, we had no findings in relation to the report on the audit of the financial statements themselves. There is an emphasis of a matter paragraph under this year as well for the implementation of GAZI eighty-four, which is related to fiduciary activities and their presentation in the financial statements. So that's a little difference in the report, um, this year as well. Does anyone have any questions on the auditor's report?
I don't see any hands. Are there any, uh, we'll wait to take, uh, questions from the public till the end of all the presentations. Okay.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Crowe has his hand up.
Um. Yes, Councilmember Crowe. I don't know why I didn't see you.
Yes, thank you. In the, uh, the auditor's report, there were four recommendations that were made.
Uh, yes, I'm going to be going over that letter next. Um, this is just the report on just the financial statements themselves. There is a separate report over internal control over financial reporting, which we did have for recommendation. And we also had a, a best practices letter, uh, to management, which also had two recommendations on it. So those two I will be going over as well.
All right, I'll wait for that. Thank you.
All right. So then with that one, I'll go into that report. So let me pull that up really fast. So, um, I'll go over the report over internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. So essentially as a part of our audit, we gain an understanding of internal controls that the city has in place. And we test certain areas to ensure appropriate segregation of duties, um, supervisory information and, uh, basic overall controls over certain transactions are in place and operating as intended. And so this year, um, we did have a few repeat findings from the prior year, um, that I'll just briefly go over. So the first of which being, um, segregation of duties, uh, we had found that there are people within the accounting, uh, in the accounting department that have access to certain parts of the process that, um, they should have restricted to them. And so, uh, the main one was for the accounts payable technician, having the ability to, um, to add or modify vendors, um, and along with all the other accounts payable processes. We want to see those segregated, um, as a way to mitigate risk. So that's the first finding, uh, which again is a repeat from last year. The second finding is towards reconcili- the bank reconciliation review. Uh, we, as a best practice and as a whole, like to see that, uh, the bank reconciliations are reconciled timely after the month end. To ensure that errors, if any, are, you know, caught timely or if there's any, you know, misclassifications within the financial accounting software, um, are identified and corrected timely. So that was one of the things that we noted was not being documented properly this year, which we recommend that they go ahead and they do that. And then finding number three is a non-compliance finding, uh, over the purchasing policy and contract support. Um, we had a similar finding last year. To where, uh, some of the contracts selected did not have appropriate supporting documentation for the procurement method used or the appropriate procurement method was used for a few of those contracts. And then the last one is non-compliance with the investment policy. Again, repeat finding from last year, and this is just stating that inside of your investment policy, it states that quarterly treasurer reports are to be, uh, prepared and submitted to city manager or city council for review and approval, uh, which was not done in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So those are the four findings that we have in there. I would like to point out that the city does not have any material weakness or anything that we consider to be material weaknesses. Uh, they are just significant deficiencies. And finance staff has been working diligently to go ahead and correct some of these items, uh, from the prior year and in the current year. There was a bit of staff turnover this year, which was the main result of this being a repeat finding. So I did want to just discuss that. Were there any questions on this report?
Um, you know, I, I have a comment. It's, it was difficult for me to, um, and this is just for staff for the future next year, to tab the different audit reports and best practice letter and everything. Cause now I'm finding myself having to rifle through all these pages to find my notes. So I will apologize when it comes to me with a couple of comments and questions that might be from report to report to report. But, um, do, is this, are you done with your reports?
Sorry, I have two more. I can go through the other two. Okay, let me go through the, uh, other two first. And then, all right, so let's do the best practices letter. And so the best practices letter is a letter that we issue, uh, usually just to management, but they've, uh, decided to present it here as well. And these are non items that we had considered to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. We have just identified instances where we think that they can enhance or better the control that they currently have in place. And so the two recommendations that we had for their, this year was, um, the city has over fifty credit cards, you know, currently active and in use as a city. For a city of your size with your level of departments and staff, and we would like to see that to be reduced quite a bit, um, so that only, really only personnel that really need those credit cards, you know, are using them to reduce the amount of transactions and to reduce the amount of people. Available to have available to those funds and those credit lines. And the second one is that we noted a number of trans- transfers, uh, within the different funds that did not have approved budget. And so we recommend that the city review the current procedures that they have in place to verify that the transfers between the funds are approved by council and that the documentation be given to finance department directly. So that they can go ahead and make those adjustments and, you know, make sure that all of those transfers are, you know, appropriately, um, documented and approved. And the last letter I'll go through briefly, um, is the post-ass one fourteen letter, which is our communication to governance after the audit. And so that is mainly the same as last year, just communicating certain things. I'll kind of go over it in brief. Um, we conducted it with a scope plan, uh, with the plan, scope and timing previously communicated to you, complied with all ethical requirements. There is, um, a new section in the report this year, again, related to a new auditing standard that lists out significant risks that we identify during the audit. And, um, I want to take some time to kind of go over this section right here, because there's been a lot of questions about, you know, the reason why this is being disclosed now rather than, you know, in previous years when it wasn't. It is related to that new auditing standard that came out. So it is now a requirement for us to explicitly list out, these are significant risks that we identify during our audit. Um, and so the two risks are the management's override of internal controls over financial reporting and then the revenue recognition. And we did add a paragraph down here to try to clarify a little bit and hopefully, you know, clear some of the kind of gaps that may come at seeing those. These are risks that we identify in most audits. Almost every entity will have these two risks, um, in there. And just because these risks have been identified for the city does not mean that we encountered anything. That would say that those risks are currently, um, present or that something has happened to cause us to believe that there has been management override controls or that there has been a problem with revenue recognition. I just wanted to clarify that for a minute. I know I'll probably have a couple of questions on that one. Um, qualitative aspects, we go over significant accounting policies, um, where we also list out the implementation of GAZI eighty-four in the current year, which I spoke about in the auditor's report. It'll talk about some significant estimates, namely the attention of the OPED liabilities and depreciation. Financial statement disclosures, again, with those three or four main ones that we have in there. We had no significant difficulties encountered during the audit, no corrected or uncorrected statements, no disagreements with management. Um, we have the representation letter attached to the back of this, uh, report as well, just showing all the representations that management has given in relation to. in relation to the audit of the financial statements. There's a couple of other information paragraphs in there related to supplementary information and required supplementary information that is presented inside of the financial statements. Those are the main topics that all hit inside of that report. So on all the city had a great audit. It was very clean. We didn't have any changes. And again, staff was very responsive and was able to give us all the stuff timely. So thank you again to the city staff for allowing us to help and continue to have a very nice and a nice audit, I'll say. And those are the end of my reports. I can take questions now.
So that's it for the auditing side?
Correct. I think Ron had a separate presentation.
Um, I want to ask Kindon, our city manager, did you want to add anything related to the audit before I open it up? Two questions from the public and council.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And I can also come back on after some of the questions from the council as well or Ron. And I can respond to those. I do want to point out, we appreciate the work of our auditing team. Very professional in what they do, very experienced and good to work with. And so we appreciate that. One of the items that Evelyn mentioned was the credit cards. I do want to note with the council that Ron and I have started working on that. We started working on that actually last year. But it was after the fiscal year had ended. And so therefore it wasn't captured in this audit report. But we've already been able to reduce those credit cards by a third. And we're continuing to be continuing to look at other employees who have cards and see which ones we can also reduce in that regards as well. So that's something that, again, we started last year, but it was done after the fiscal year end and so not captured in this report. But something that's very important to us to look into. But with that, I'll let council members and public, if there's any, ask some questions on Evelyn's reports. And then we can also, I know Ron had some things to mention too. And Ron, maybe we wait for the council members and then we could chime in as well.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is go to the public next and then council and then back to staff. Mari, are there any members of the public who have any questions or wish to comment on this item?
No, Madam Mayor, we have no hands up.
Okay. And colleagues, I'll start with Councilmember Weintraub.
Hi, thank you for the presentation, Evelyn. I'm troubled about the credit cards, just because, Kindon, this is actually before your time, but Ron, you and I spoke about this a few years. I mean, as soon as I learned about this, it's probably two years ago, and I thought there were being steps made to immediately change this. That like we had gone over like a list of people who had credit cards and it was like very obvious that those staff members should not have had credit cards. So I'm just, I'm trying to understand why it's still taking this long.
Thank you, Councilmember Weintraub. Yes, we, we're still, we are working with the departments as well as looking at the operational needs of the, of the city. And so we have, like Kindon mentioned, we have reduced the number of people that had the credit cards, but, and so it'll take further time to reduce it even more because we do have a number of staff that do need their credit cards for making purchases either when they're out and about and they need to either drop by Home Depot or Staples or wherever they may be to actually purchase something that they, that they require or when they're making purchases at their computer, they need that credit card as well. So we have reduced it like Kindon said and it will, and it will continue to be reduced. When we spoke a couple of years ago, we were even higher as far as than the fifty. I think we were somewhere close to sixty credit cards at the time or maybe just a slightly above that. So we're still working on it.
So just tell me in hard numbers, how, are you basing it on our number of full-time staff or part-time staff? Like, how many actual credit cards do we have?
I believe we are, I believe we are down somewhere around the forty. Mark, I'd have to, I have to go, I would have to go back online and, and actually do a download of how many people are issued the credit cards. We, because we keep reducing it every, like a couple every month to, to keep it going down.
But I guess my last question is, are you basing that forty employees have it? Is it just full-time employees or do any part-time employees have credit cards?
The vast, vast majority of them are full-time. I know at one time we did have some that were part-time. I'd have to take a look at it to see if we still have part-time. Or Weintraub, I, I'm hesitant to say that we have that that is zero. It may be very small and it may be zero. I'd have to take a, I'd have to take a look at that again to see for part-timers.
Right. I just want to make sure there's a solid list of every employee that has a credit. We should know right off the bat how many city-issued credit cards we have. And this was such a big issue a few years ago. I want to make sure this is addressed like immediately. This is a really big issue.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time, Alicia?
No, no, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Krauthausen.
Yes, thank you. First, I want to, you know, thank Ron and Kindon and the staff for, for doing such a fabulous job. The audit obviously shows that, that our records are in good shape. And it's hard that we have to focus on these significant items that were repeats from a year ago. Instead of sitting here and just congratulating you for a job well done, but, you know, unfortunately, that's what we have to do. So the first one on segregation of duties, it says here that it was implemented January thirty-first twenty-two, which means we've, we've already addressed this one. Could you tell us about the segregation of duties and, and who are the individuals that now have, you know, overlapping responsibilities in accounts receivable, accounts payable?
Yes. So Councilmember Krauthausen, the, the main issue here is the ability of the accounts payable clerk to basically create a new vendor on our financial system or modify an existing vendor. So that would be, you know, setting up a company, setting up their address, their phone number, their contact and so forth. And so what that entailed was going back to our software provider, Fundbalance, and walking through the steps of, hey, can we actually, through the software system, prevent the AP clerk from doing that specific function? And give that function only to somebody else and not other AP functions? Because that's where the segregation has to come into play. Because you can't, you don't want somebody to set up a vendor and then be able to issue them a check all the way through. So that's what, that's what we are, we've almost fully implemented that now. We're, we're, we're getting close. I don't, I yeah. We're, we're basically there. Again, we're going, we're working with the, with the software company on making sure that we turn on and off the right boxes on the system as we see them to do that, to get that to be completely separate. So that's where we are today.
Okay. So we're not quite there yet, but the report says it was changed by January thirty.
Right. That's what we, that's what I was hoping for is that I, I get it done by the, by the end of January. And we're, we're about, we're about there. I'm just letting you know, not quite.
Okay. The February twenty-eighth item is getting quarterly treasurer reports to the council. So we'll be seeing those quarterly at our meetings?
Uh, no, I actually issued a few quarterly reports last year and that was all done through email. And that's adhering to the investment policy where it's delivered to the city council. It doesn't officially state that it has to be in a city council meeting. So, but it is delivered to the city manager and the city council. So I need to catch up on those quarterly reports and then report them at the end of every quarter.
Okay. And then the March thirty-first item on there was a bank reconciliation. Is that, is there, is there anything that's holding you up from doing these things? Is there, you know, something in the procedures, something in the calendar that, that stops you from getting these things completed?
So the, so the answer is, is that we do not have a very robust financial software system. And we have a variety of manual human interface systems as well as QuickBooks, Fundbalance, financial software system. We interface with SmartGov, which is our planning, building permit system. So it's, it's the, it's all these systems and working together with the financial system that makes it last long, makes the bank reconciliation process a lot more tedious and harder to discern when you have, when you have different errors. For example, we've had two, I'll call it hiccups in our financial software. So one occurred last year in the actual close where the close actually didn't go correctly in just one fund. And the system actually said, everything's fine, everything's perfect. And we, and we looked at it and we go, okay, good. And we closed. And then I'm doing analysis later and the one fund is out of balance. And so we've had to fix that. That took a half an hour with me on the phone with the technician and he did stuff behind the scenes. So I could have never have fixed it. Knowing my access on the system. It took a technician from the software company to fix the issue. The last one actually just occurred a few weeks ago. And it was the interface between our cash receiving system and our, and our general ledger. And it was the same thing where it did a double counting. Well, it wasn't the same thing. It was, it was different, but it did a double counting and it should never have happened. So it's a, it's a bug in the software. Again, we called the Fundbalance and they fixed it. But it takes a decent amount of time to figure out where the error is. And then to call the software company and go, hey, here is what I found. Here is where I found it. Here's the numbers. They go in there, they look at it and they go, hmm. Okay. And then they go behind the scenes and they fix it.
So.
So that's a software issue. The other issue is that we are, we are catching up. So we have now completed November's BankRec. So we're technically just one month behind. So we should be done with December, but we are not. It's too soon to be done with January because we're not officially closed with the January month. We'll do that in about a week and a half. And then we should work on the January BankRec, which that basically should be done by the end of February, beginning, beginning of March.
All right. Thank you. Madam Mayor, if you'll entertain one more question. This one is for Kindon.
And Ron, if you could be briefer.
Sorry.
Kindon, the, the third item in the, the non-conformance there was purchasing policy and contract support. Could you maybe identify for us, you know, the, the contracts that, that are, you know, outside of policy and, and what happened with those?
I'm not much, you, Councilmember, I'll probably have to rely on Ron on this one. But it does require that we review our purchasing policy, but I do want Ron to give the details on that if I could.
Yeah. So these are contracts that the auditor randomly pulls. And they pulled some contracts that were processed a few years ago. We've tightened up a lot of the controls regarding getting informal bids, formal bids, and, and the departments are adhering to those processes. But a lot of those procedures were tightened up within the last about twelve, fourteen, sixteen months. So the, so the contracts that the auditors pull again are random and they just happen to be older contracts and they looked and there was missing documentation as compared to our purchasing policy. And so, yes, we agree, we were out of, we were out of compliance.
But nothing in the last twelve months.
Again, they didn't, I don't believe they pulled any contracts that were done in the most recent one.
Can forward you the, the contract selection, Ron?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Shapiro.
Thank you. Most of the questions have already been raised. I already had discussed the issue of the credit cards previously with the city manager and Ron. I will reiterate my support for Councilmember Weintraub's comments that we take care of this. It should not appear on next year's CAFR. Matter of fact, it being, I think there's no reason we couldn't take care of that before we approved the budget in July, whatever those numbers are, whatever city manager and CFO and others deem appropriate is fine, but this shouldn't linger any longer. And thank you for the great work, great report on the CAFR, Ron, Kindon, staff. And, and Evelyn, thank you for changing your name and your company to Rams, as was mentioned. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I, I will go next. I want to first of all say how refreshing, I think that's probably not the best term, it is to have our auditors here explaining everything, walking through it for many, 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 many years. The auditor gave us a letter and that was almost it. So thank you for the thoroughness of the information. I do recall either in your contract, Evelyn, or maybe it's under best practices under one of the associations that you are to randomly, not just deal with the financial staff, but to randomly interview department heads and other employees, asking them if they had any sense that there might be something irregular happening.
Correct. So we do do that as part of our audit procedures and it's documented within our work papers, but there's no formal report that that is written up or given, but we do do that as part of our audit procedures, ask if there were of any, you know, or were of any fraud or were any, you know, inclinations of it, or if they've heard anything or if someone has given them information. So yes, we do do that on an annual basis and we rotate the people every year from different departments.
Okay. Did you ask any council members?
We did send out fraud inquiries this year as well, and all of you should have received them. We don't always receive all of them back. I know last year we did one-on-one interviews for it being our first year of the audit. And this year we emailed out or mailed out fraud inquiries this year. So all of you should have received one. And I think we received a majority of them back.
Right. Okay. And so you can assure us that the staff that you interview, you'll rotate around?
Correct. Yes, we rotate them every year.
Because it was, it was found that the same staff got interviewed.
Yeah. I will say that we will interview the finance staff every, that is one department that we will not rotate. So all of them will be asked the same questions every year.
Okay. And then, um, under your, under the control, the internal control, the four findings. And it, it indicates that these things will change within the coming months or within a couple of months, these things are going to be changed. Can we put hard dates in here? Or Kindon, Ron, can you give us hard dates when these will be found? Because for two reasons, one, I want a hard date. But number two, I don't want a report that says it's been accomplished when it hasn't been accomplished. This is an audit. You can't put wrong information in an audit report. So I would like staff at some point to come back with hard dates rather than within a few months, within a couple of months. And I think that's not asking too much, is it?
No, we can definitely put down a hard date.
And then.
Sorry, just a quick comment on that as well. It is normal practice for people to put estimated dates of completion on these reports because that's when they anticipate and it, it could change, it could vary from time to time, but it, it is normal practice to put an estimated date of completion. It, it doesn't have to be a hard deadline in order to be in the report. Just wanted to.
I'd be happy with an estimated date. But in these examples, it's within a couple of months. And, and if you look at the date of this report, it should be now, so they should be finished. And the other one says will be implemented within the coming months. I would say by summer or by spring or by, if you're gonna, if that's acceptable, if you, if you're not comfortable giving dates or that's not typical. The other ones you, you answered. Um, I also wanted to know more about the credit card and the reduction in credit cards. And then my last comment is, Ron, it sounds like you, and I think you've talked about this before, you need some new financial software or, and Evelyn, I see you nodding.
Yes.
Um, can we, I mean, why don't you recommend that? Or have you, why don't we budget for that? And let's get you that.
Yes, Mayor, we have had discussions, Kindon and I, and we've had Yes, Mayor, we have had discussions, Kinden and I, and we've had some. An initial discussion also with council member Kraut and Shapiro, the Budget Subcommittee. For that. So yes, we will either be putting it in this coming year's. Budget request, or we may come before the council with an individual. Action item for council to approve for a new financial software. I am beginning to invite. Software companies to come and present. And just to give you an idea, this will be. Maybe three hundred thousand dollars. It's, it's not, it's not cheap. It's not inexpensive. But we will be buying a system that will, one, get rid of QuickBooks. As a standalone little software package that we use. For our Parking Authority and we would also be automating a number of things that are manually accomplished. And take a lot of staff time currently. So, and with that, the implementation. Again, it's not buying Microsoft Excel. Implementation will be a minimum of twelve months. And it could be as much as twenty-four. It depends on staff coming up to speed. It depends on. All the issues of integration, working with SmartGov and existing software. So it's a long or a longer process than what most people realize when they go, oh, just buy a new software and plug it in.
That's what I said. And hearing that, you know. I think you should start the process now because there have been other lags in timely information on different reports, things like that. I don't know if that's tied in with this, but. And, and we're coming to the year end. I don't know where exactly we're at right now with any surplus funds, but. This is, this is important. This sounds like a mom and pop shop, the way you have to call and get little numbers reconciled. I'm, I'm. Oh, let's, let's fix that. Thank you all. Like, no more, no, no members of the public yet, ever, Maury?
None, Madam Mayor.
And I don't see any more hands. So thank you all very much. That was excellent. Ron, you were gonna report on the CAFR.
Yes, if I could maybe take minutes or maybe a little bit longer. And if there's any questions, I can give a quick report on the CAFR.
I'd love that. Yeah, I think it's important.
I am gonna share my screen.
I guess we don't call it the CAFR anymore, do we? What do we call it? The Africa, Afra?
I am not gonna call it anything. It's our financial statements.
Okay, fair enough.
Yes, the Gatsby officially changed. The acronym from CAFR to what you see on the screen. And so I'm just gonna call it the financial statements. So here is our, here's our CAFR. I will start the slideshow. And you can. This, by the way, is posted to the city's website. And so any member of the public or actually anybody in the whole world can go ahead and take a look at our annual financial statement. Our financial statement is from July one twenty to June of twenty-one. We had our independent auditors, Rams, they're in our, in the second year of a, of a five-year. And Rams actually produces the financial statements on our behalf and Evelyn already went through all her audit reports. We have received the award for excellence, which is from the GFOA, which is the highest. Award that they offer and we've received that for over twenty years. We got it last year as well for June of twenty twenty. We anticipate getting it for this year as well, June of twenty-one. If you look on, in the financial statements, you'll see here. On page thirty-two, we have our citywide financial statements and I'll just go over really quickly. Cash, a little over forty-two million. Our current liabilities is five point eight. These are all of our payables, if you will, contracts where we've actually. Act, had the vendor do work. We just haven't written them a check yet as of June thirtieth. And that amounted to five point eight million. So we're in good coverage. We are over by cash of thirty-six million. So we have. Plenty of cash in the bank to pay all of our current liabilities. That being said, if you take a look. At our non-current liabilities, which is all of our, it's mainly our outstanding debt of about thirty-eight million for our bonds. Our unfunded pensions, our unfunded retiree medical of amount, of amounting to about fifty-four point five million. And you can see that cash is less than those non-current liabilities by about twelve million. I, ideally you would like cash to be more than the non-current liabilities. More metrics, again, cash in the general fund. So we've gone from citywide down to general fund. These are on pages thirty-five to thirty-nine. And that, in our financial statement, cash is thirteen million, expenses were twenty-two. So we have about seven months of cash to cover our expenses. Why is this important? From July one to middle of December, we don't receive enough cash to cover all our, our expenses. And, and the reason for that is we don't receive. Barely any property tax until Christmas time. And then we received the other big portion of our property tax right around the end of April. So we are not cash positive for the year until about January, about this time of the year. Is when we actually start receiving, had, receive more cash than we have in expenses typically. So we want to have cash in the bank in our general fund to last a good six months. And so we're there. We're, we are doing fine. We have number of months being seven, so that, so that's good. Another metric is general fund. Our revenues were more than our expenses, which was good. Sorry, I forgot to take out the, the net loss. That was from last year. I should have put net gain, my error. But we had a net gain on the year of about one point eight per one point eight million. The majority of that, if you see the note down on the bottom, remember that we sold some property. Very close to City Hall where the gas station bought the leased land that we used to lease to them. And that was one point three eight million. And so that was, that was recognized this last year. So if we take the sale of the property out, we still had a net gain in our general fund, which was very good. But it's only four hundred and ten thousand dollars and not the, not the million eight. But still good considering the environment that we were in with the economic show slowdown. Shop still being semi-open, not open, and the restrictions on the economy that were placed this last fiscal. This last fiscal year. And other matrix, metrics, if you go to pages forty-one to forty-three of the financial report. Our tennis and swim center, which is our only enterprise operation, we account for it as a business type operation. So cash versus expenses, we really only have one month of cash to cover expenses. That should, so that's low. The percentage is only fifteen percent. Revenues and expenses, we actually did have a net loss in tennis and swim. And again, that was the restrictions. Due to the COVID environment that we were in last fiscal year. All in all, a smallish loss of three hundred and eighty-four thousand. We don't anticipate a loss. This current fiscal year in, in tennis and swim, when we come back. Maybe with the mid-year in, in a month, we can give you an update on tennis and swim where we think we'll end up this year. It should be positive and we'll see how much we estimate for a positive for, for next year. Also in tennis and swim, we would, we have cash of six hundred and fifty-nine thousand. It is less. Than all of our depreciation by about three point four million. That is, you know, if we should. How do I, how do I put this? Cash should be about. Should be greater than that appreciation, just so that we can fix up the facility as needed. If there needs to be a new roof, new pool equipment, major equipment. That keep the facility running and even our smallest equipment. Of all the fitness and, and mobile equipment. Cash is about equal to that. So that, that's not, that's not bad at all. What we've talked about before, our unfunded pension liability increased this last year by about ten percent. Went from seven point one to seven point nine million. Again, this is the unfunded pension liability. So this is what the city owes cowpers. In order to be fully funded, it would take the seven point nine million. Actually takes a little bit more. This is the. This is the accounting side, the accounting. Differs from what the actuaries actually want. So, but it, they are close in number. And the same way with our OPEB liability, OPEB is just another term for our retiree medical. We, the city does not have any cash set aside for retiree medical. If we would want to set aside cash for that, the accounting of it would be this eight point seven million dollars. To set aside cash for that unfunded liability. And then Rams already went through, Evelyn did a great job of going through all of her audit reports. I just had two slides on that. And that's basically it for the, for the CAFR. I am free to. Answer any questions that any of the council may have on the, the entire CAFR. Let me see if I can stop sharing. There we go.
Any hands up from council members on any follow-up questions? About the CAFR? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public?
No, Madam Mayor, no hands.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ron, to your entire staff. Thank you to our, our budget task force. Who probably took a real close look at this and to Kinden and.
Madam Mayor, the city attorney has to stand up.
All right, Matt. What do you have to say?
Madam Mayor, I didn't mean to interrupt your, your final comments. I was just gonna say before we close the item, the council will need to vote to receive and file.
Right.
CAFR and related reports or the after.
I have it right here on my script.
Awesome. Thank you.
Which I stray from regularly. All right. Um, this is a receive and file item. We're not, we don't have to vote on that, do we? We just receive and file.
Oh, yes. No, no need for a vote, but just to note that for the record. Thank you.
All right. We're to, on, on to our last item, item eight, old business. And are, is there a hand up for any kind of break or? I think this is a fairly, I'm guessing a short item. We will see. All right. So the plan, uh, number eight, Planning Commission recommendation to the city council to consider the commission's discussion. And possible exemptions to the citywide prohibition on residential short-term rentals. And we have presenting. Tom Bartlett, welcome Tom back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I don't have a presentation because the written staff report, I think, covered everything. And I didn't want to just add more and duplicate anything, but I'm certainly available to answer questions. I might summarize at least for the benefit of anybody who's watching in the general public that. Sometime ago, prior to May, the council, of course, received some testimony from a gentleman who was interested in. The city exploring an exception to its provision for short-term rentals. This person, Richard Neuer. Wanted to be able to have revenue generating use on his property so that he could have additional funds to benefit his family. I'm not even going into details of what he did, but. Based on that, the council asked the planning commission to review that and discuss it. The commission did. I think it was on May sixth. And. For reasons I'm not gonna go into that ended up in our back hopper, but we're back on it and it's before you now. We've summarized what the commission talked about, the pros and cons that they developed. And staff's own analysis, and I encapsulated that in my report. Our assessment is that while there are certainly a number of pros and a number of cons for each one. Staff's assessment is the cons outweigh the pros. There are definitely risks that go in. And in terms of. And intent to help this gentleman, any other persons like him and his family, there are options available that would be. Similar and actually perhaps more reliable as a fund generator from real estate that would be owned. And I summarized those in the report as well. For example, rooms can be rented. And up to actually six under state law, six separate individuals who are unrelated can live in a dwelling without any special permits. We have to grant that as an approval if somebody asks for a permit. A dwelling, of course, can be rented on its own and a portion of a dwelling can be carved out as. Either an ADU or even an ADU and a JADU, also required under state law. So there are options available. That allow for a more reliable source of funds than a short-term rental, which. To be honest, there are entities that will run those kind of programs for you. For somebody has property, they're gonna promise you a lot. They'll promise you revenue, but they may not deliver. And it sounds lucrative, but I think it's risky. That's just my opinion, a little bit of experience from my daughter having used this. But. It's, that's, that's the basic premise behind our report. So available to answer questions, certainly the council. Direction is where we're gonna go.
All right. Um, Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public wishing to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we have no hands up.
Before I go to council, a quick question to Tom. Was this individual who brought this to our attention involved in the process with the planning commission and staff's? Review?
My understanding is that he was. I wasn't part of that, to be honest. It was. Our retired director who was overseeing that. But my understanding is he was for the planning commission informed.
Did he know that this was on the agenda this evening then?
I don't know that myself. Maury maybe knows.
I do not know that.
Okay, let's go to council questions. Councilmember Bazzagin.
Um, thank you. I, I'm the individual who asked along with another council member for this to be. Refer to the planning commission. I appreciate you doing this. I understand there was a delay. That's not, you know, that's understandable. Tom, I, I just was looking at your report again tonight, just as you were speaking. I didn't see. An indication of the vote of the planning commission. Was that unanimous?
The, the commission did not come to a decision on one side or the other. They were straddling the fence, to be honest. That's why the best they could come up with, I guess I'll put it that way, was a list of pros and cons. And they pretty much left it to the council to decide what it would do. Inviting members of council to peruse their own minutes, the staff reports that were presented to them. And their deliberations as available on Granicus. We felt it was reasonable, appropriate to try to encapsulate that in our written report. And that's what, what I tried to do here. As well as provide our own assessment of staff.
Well, I, I, I remember specifically asking it be referred to the planning commission for them to make a recommendation. So they never. Were asked to make a recommendation or they declined to make one. What, how did that go? That's kind of surprising to hear that.
I'd say it goes into the latter category, but I couldn't tell you why. Again, I, I was not present at that meeting.
I was present at the planning missions meeting, May sixth last year. And while I don't have my precise notes right in front of me, my recollection is that the planning commission. Considered it at some length and did not find themselves able to make a recommendation. They were asked to do so, but they declined to do so.
Why, why is that? I, I know, I now understand why it didn't appear in Tom's report. But even Tom, if, if they don't, if they decline, that should be in there too. But. Putting that aside, what is the reason they declined? Deadlocked, didn't want to do it, weren't asked to do it. What, what, what's the prob, what was the problem here?
Well, first of all, they definitely were asked to. So that happened. They, they simply struggled to come to a consensus is what I was told. Again, I wasn't there. Matt, having been there, can tell you more firsthand.
That's my recollection that they weren't able, they didn't find themselves all on the same or even nearing the same page. And rather than a series of divided votes, the commission simply decided to, for lack of a better word, punt. To the planning committee, to the council. And I just found my notes from the meeting. If you bear with me a moment. Yeah, the request was for the council to assess it. It was summed up by then Chair Washburn. Or Vice Chair Washburn. Motion was for the council to consider request and evaluate the options and issues. They didn't find themselves on one page and thought that the matter was worthy of discussion. By the council.
So we waited a year for them to just bounce it back up to us? I've never seen such a thing. So I'm inclined to give it back to them and tell them to make a recommendation. That's their job. That's what they were asked to do. I've never, I have never seen the planning commission. Spend a year and then just kick it back to us on an issue like this where we're just asking for them to take a vote.
I'm perfectly happy to take it back to them and. Basically prompt them to make a decision.
I, I think that's, they should not get in the habit of doing this. I, I actually have seen this once before on a major issue. But at least that one was very complex. And I understand why they did it. This one, this is a remarkable thing. I just thought it wasn't in your report because a unanimity agreed with you. And you just didn't put it in the report, but.
So James, can I go on to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Member Weintraub, I, I. I am gonna say to that, I, I, well, go ahead, Councilmember Weintraub.
Well, do you want to go first? Because I'm gonna share my.
Well, I'm just wondering if there's consensus, if we can draw consensus here. Based on what James has just said, that it's, it's unacceptable and. We not only send it back, but it sounds like the original. Resident who brought this to our attention. Perhaps wasn't even engaged. And this has citywide implications, both pro and con. That I think there needs to be a robust discussion on it. So, but if you have.
I have an opinion on the item. Are we not gonna, or do you not want me to share my thoughts on the item?
Well, I don't know, Matt, if, if there's consensus to send it back.
I would suggest if I may that it may be reasonable to see if the council has opinions on the item is. It's possible that the council has three votes to end the matter tonight. If there's a decision at the council level, rather than remand it back to then come back. If the council has an opinion that a majority, that is. The answer, there may well be an answer tonight. But I'll defer, of course, to majority.
So why don't you proceed, Alicia?
And I will share it's pretty quick. I do not. Support changing the city's prohibition on short-term rentals. In any shape or form. I think we had so many issues and so many. We had so many situations that were negative to the greater community when from the party houses to disturbances and neighborhoods. I mean. There's, as the staff report outlined, there's other ways for people that are in these situations, but just I do not support the change. We came to this. Decision with a lot of thought and a lot of discussion, and I do not support changing it.
Okay. Mayor Potem Shapiro.
My sentiments are. Aligned with Councilmember Weintraub. I am, I recall this a year ago. I still, I agree with James as well, Councilmember Bazzagin, that there is. No reason this should have been a year and then punted back to us. That's. That's a bit odd. They could have taken a vote, even if it was three to two, or whatever it might have been with a recommendation. My concern, even as of today, I'm waiting and the next week we're going to be. I'm going to be getting and I'll share with council, I'll share with Kinden as well. Some issues with potential temporary or short-term rentals that are going on in the city right now. So I don't want to have a less restrictive or a way out. If these are real serious safety or health concerns in our city going on. The fact that the report and I've read through everything, I watched the meeting as well at the planning commission, the tape of it. The report is appreciated and the staff recommendation of alternatives that actually would be. Financially better if that is the real sole purpose here. Are, are to me very compelling as well. So I would not support. I'd be supportive of maintaining what we have in place and not support even sending it back unless that's what the majority wishes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowe.
Yeah, thank you. I have a question for Tom. In the planning commission packet that's at the end of this. It says a citizen has requested the city council to grant exceptions to the full ban. And the council seeks your recommendation. The petitioner seeks an exemption to a full ban in consideration of. And what's listed as senior age resident on site. It then lists excess room availability. A limit on guest number. And those suggest to me that he was actually looking to rent out rooms in compliance with your six. Individuals. Would he be able to do that on a short-term basis, renting out a room as opposed to renting out the whole house?
I'm not on a short-term, meaning less than thirty days basis. And that's why I pointed out that. To do room rentals thirty days plus. Which is long-term by definition and, and basically the real estate of world. That's perfectly fine. And that's protected under state law. In fact, even federal law. And by ordinance.
And were these explained to this gentleman? And does he, did those meet his needs?
I unfortunately inherited this very recently, and I'm not sure exactly what was done by my, by our predecessor. I'll just put it that way. But I can certainly follow up and accomplish that.
I, I would encourage you to follow up with that if you would for us. And with that, I would echo Councilmember Weintraub and Councilmember Shapiro that. I don't see enough information to support changing our short-term rental ordinance. And I don't see a need to kick this back to the planning commission either. The only way that we would be able to do this would be with a lengthy. Application and permit process, and it would significantly increase code enforcement because we would have to separate, you know. Exempted short-term rentals versus the ones that just appear on the online. Sources, it would really make it much more difficult and expensive to enforce. And I would certainly not want to see that. I want to, I, I would like to keep our short-term rental policy in as it exists.
I'm gonna go back to Councilmember Bazzagin. You have a last comment before I go to the city manager.
Now, I, I, if, if there are three votes to keep the status quo, I don't need to send it back to the commission. Just to get a recommendation, just knowing that there's three votes that want to keep it. But I want to say. It appears as though the, the interest party wasn't even told it was coming on the agenda tonight. Plus, the planning commission did not do its job. And I don't want to see this back again, agendized like an item like this where, where a recommendation is needed and they don't, they don't give one. So please, none of these things should happen in the future.
I, I just want to say definitely heard and noted and. And you got my promise.
Mayor, council members, just a couple of items of clarification. This was taken to the planning commission not long after the, the council requested it. The timing was that it wasn't staff's. Intent to delay it this long. Staff did their due diligence, prepared the report. It just wasn't calendared with some of our canceled meetings and also other items that took precedence. And so it wasn't that it was a, a year and delayed. It was just not calendared. So it was done and done appropriately as, as council requested. I do see your point, council, about planning commissions. Responsibility to make a recommendation and we'll have that discussion with them. And we will also meet one-on-one with the individual to discuss the opportunities that they have available to them. To resolve the issue of their finances without having to change the, the ordinance on this.
Okay, thank you for, for that. My only comment is. I, I've never seen this happen before either. Of course, they take votes. It's not always. There's no ties. So this can't happen again. And then I am a little concerned that the individual was not engaged in this process. And if that was the case, that that can't happen again. We need to keep track and I don't know who does it. If the planning stuff, staff does it, or if the city clerk does it notifying, you know, who needs to be notified that that certainly needs to happen. And that, that's it for me. So we are going to take a vote on this. And the question is, I get Matt, it says that staff recommends. No change. So is that the motion then that, or how do we do this? Since they didn't have a recommendation and.
So because the consensus so far is to maintain the status quo, there's no need to take a formal action. We would only need an action to direct an ordinance to be written. So consensus can maintain the status quo with, as noted, the caveat, as noted by city manager, to get. Back to the resident on a one-on-one basis.
Okay, fair enough. So that's where we're at. One last comment about. Kenan, there aren't many more housekeeping. I don't want to dismiss this by call it housekeeping, but. We had a very, very long future agenda. Item list that we've been trying to get through. Is there anything else critical that are very delayed that? We need to bring to our attention and get it on the next agenda too.
Yeah, Mayor, let me review that with staff tomorrow in our executive team meeting and we'll provide some recommendations on timing of when to bring this back.
Okay, that sounds great. All right, we're now at informational reports and we'll start with the check registry. Are there any questions about the check registry? I do not see any hands up, any task force reports? I do not see any hands up. Does the city manager have anything to report?
And I'm mayor, Mayor Potem Shapiro has to stand up.
Oh, go ahead, Mayor Shapiro.
I put it down, but I'll be quick. We already spoke of our climate action plan sustainability subcommittee meeting and we had Alicia and I met with. On the emergency preparedness subcommittee as well. Tomorrow is, I've had one and the second meeting tomorrow is of the League of California Cities Policy Committee where we'll be discussing. Parks, children, libraries. And on SCAG had a number of meetings, including the budget. Where there are funds available at the state level for infrastructure, parks and wildfire resilience that are now available. And other meetings will wait till next meeting to discuss. Thank you.
Right. And I think that is it for the council. So any. Future agenda or information items, Councilmember Weintraub?
Can we just get an update on the Mohawk and Highway project?
Yes, we will do that.
Yeah, that sounds like a great idea.
Thank you so much.
Any other hands, items, anybody going once? All right, with that. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, you know, do we even need a motion to adjourn?
We don't, we don't really need one.
All right, so we are adjourning to the next special meeting, which is actually next Wednesday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM, where we will. Have a robust discussion on the work plan. I want to thank my colleagues and staff for moving that process right along. It's. It's moving fast and that's good. So thank you and good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.